The Purport Lane is number three, five and six instructs trust in the Lord with all thine heart, and to believe not unto thy own understanding, but in all thy ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct thy path. Let us pray now. God our Father, how excellent is thy name in all the earth. We seek your presence even in all of these faiths of great minds and thought. Oh, God, we pray this morning that you will help this board to believe not to their own understanding, but in all their ways acknowledge you, trusting you to direct their path. We pray that administrators, faculty, staff, workers, students, parents, community, and even this state will see your fingerprints upon the business overseen by these things. May your board praise the system of education with your truth, with your compassion, with your love, and with your sensitivity to humanity that you created in your own image. Let them lead in the wisdom of Solomon. Let them walk in the strength of character. We pray even now that this board with purpose in their hearts to serve you and to serve their fellow man. Grant them what they need. God very crucial times. And as always it is my prayer that you would show this board how to work together, walk together, plan together, agree to disagree together, solve issues together, be a positive force together, and make a difference together while continuing to build this beloved community. Bless this board we pray. And in the words of James Weldon, "God of thy weary years, God of thy silent tears, thou who hast brought us thus far on the way, thou who hast might led us into the light. Keep us forever in thy path, we pray. May all this be done in glory to your name, in that mighty and majestic and marvelous name of Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
Madam Pastor, will you tell them who you are and where you're located at? Where your church is?
Yes, sir. I thought the board would have done that, but I will do it. I take the privilege of doing it. I am Dr. Mary Whitley Moss, Senior Pastor of Amabatic Church of Lakeland, Louisiana.
Right down the street from me.
Right down the street. Thank you, thank you.
Thank your presence. We don't have a team today, so we're not allowed those vertically challenged board with a higher loss. We just explicitly just that. I'm glad for this drop down even cheer.
Thank you. At this time, we will appoint that role call. Or do it again, sir. Role call again. Nobody, I know that we had one or two that.
Mrs. Anne Smith?
President.
Mrs. Maple Gaines? Mrs. Elle Dudley?
President.
Mr. Byron Tate Lawson?
Mr. Henry Whitehorn, President, Attorney Attorney, Lieutenant.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Adoption of agenda, can I get them all? About your agenda.
It's moved.
Second. And then second. It's been moved and seconded and the agenda is adopted. As written, no public comments have been turned in, so we will move to the action items. And we have a request for approval or recommendation for approval for tenure and promotion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To members, honorable members of the board, I am pleased, President Shields and colleagues, I am pleased this morning to recommend two faculty members at Southern University at New Orleans, Dr. John Barlow for promotion to Associate Professor, and Dr. Deborah Darby for motion to Associate Professor. Mr. Barlow is also being recommended to. Both of the faculty members prepare portfolios. Those portfolios were reviewed by their colleagues in their departments and in their colleges. They were voted unanimously for promotion and tenure. Those recommendations made to the Dean, to the Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs, and to me, Madam Chair, I recommend Mr. Barlow for tenure and promotion to Associate Professor, and Dr. Deborah Darby for promotion to Associate Professor.
Thank you. A motion to accept. It's removed and seconded, we accept. Not petition, no opposition, motion carries. Information item, uh, yeah, rejection by Dr. Edgy Gary for new time.
Good morning. Honorable Chairman, Mr. President, distinguished board members, chairs, desks, chairs, and protocol, did you observe? I am Damian Edgy Gary, Dean of the Nessen Mandela College of Government and Social Sciences. My third privilege, Mr. Chair, to welcome the new board members and the returning board members. And the issue of way of recognizing the Jabba. So board members, new members, welcome to the Jabba Nation. And here to make a presentation to the board. To give stewardship of what the college has done. First, in the mission of the Mandela College, as you can see on the screen, I will not be reading story, I will just summarize. But the goal is to give, as I said, an iconic and the name the college represents. For the academic excellence that goes on community impulsing growth plan that emphasizes quality advancement on cultural competencies and raise the university to the candidate status. Who else is the department in the college faculty? On the board, MIT, the heads of the departments. Mr. President, when you were high and when you met with the deans, the charge was to advance students outcome. That has been the mandate you asked all the deans to respond to. And this morning, Mr. President, and for the board members, and here to give an account of the stewardship of the Mandela College of what he has done with that charge. Let me begin with the psychology. Let me begin with the psychology department. Go back to the screen, please. Uh, look, I do want to correct. All right, thank you. Let me begin with the undergraduate programs. First, I begin with the psychology department led by Dr. Freeman. The psychology department is watching at the students beginning enrollment. It offers 16 courses each semester with an average class enrollment of 30 students. And we could have hit more if we had this first and decide all the faculty. That's one department enrolled. Thirty average students with 16 courses offered semester after semester. Secondly, the psychology program led by Dr. Anthony Ete. Again, everything I'm saying, you can check it out, is documented. The psychology program offers 27 sessions of introduction to psychology with an average class size of 40 students enrolled in each section. Let me repeat, 27 sections. Each semester with an average enrollment of 40 students.
Who's in this room?
Then I move to our social work. Department led by Professor Henson. This program is the home of the largest part of undergrad in the state of Louisiana. The department, by the word of the state, receives $2 million to provide engagement training for all the hires for the state. It is also the home of the state's only, only coaching age simulation program for training state employees. While there are other nine universities involved, but we are delighted like this. And all of this, all of this is accomplished with only two full-time staff. Additionally, I've instructed the program to implement next semester, next fall semester, through certificate programs on substance abuse and case management. This is on the social one. Board members, for the last 13 years, the college has graduated the largest number of, by, by a group, of the greatest degree holders in the university. And repeat, the college, year after year, has produced the land number of undergraduate students in the university. Altogether, you have 2,405. The graph is on the board. You can look at that later on. This is the graduation year after year of each department. This is from the border regions. Again, in interest of time, we produce the highest number, 2,405. And you can see on the average, still on the online, still on graduate. Then I move to the online. The college online degree programs are the fastest growing programs in the university. During 24 academic year, fall, summer, and spring, the program generated, ladies and gentlemen, over 2 million in tuition and fees, far more than any other online program in the university. When the online program was introduced, the agreement was that the colleges would receive 25% of the revenue generated. As of this morning, not a penny has been sent back to the college generating this huge amount. On the table, you can see the departments, what they're generating, really listed. The online program here in the university is actually what the Nessen Mandela produces as the record shows. We have a total of 41 undergraduate online courses that were thought. This is undergraduate, I'm still at. And then we have a total of 26 graduate online courses to 610 students. And then altogether, Nessen Mandela College taught 67 online courses for the calendar 2024 that generated the over 2 million that I mentioned. What makes the online program tick is all found in the Mandela College. I have Dr. Addison, Stefan Addison. He provides training for instructors to teach online because not everybody is qualified to teach online. And then I have one of my staff, Dr. Alberta Robinson. She is a machine of recruitment all on her own. That's why you see the high numbers you see in the college. At this stage, I allow me the privilege, Honorable Chairman, to salute a giant in the room here with us today. This extraordinary giant, when he was in Baton Rouge, when his tenure was in Baton Rouge, he entered into a contract with the college where we trained every state employee that was under his orbit, including police people. And most senior police officers today, because of that program he introduced, received their masters on undergraduate during his tenure. I'm talking of no other person than Colonel Whitehorn. I salute you for what you did for the university. Now I move to the graduate programs. Everything I've said is about undergraduate. Now to the graduate programs. There was a historic achievement that occurred last commencement that started in fall 2023. I have been operating under what my new chancellor, Chancellor John Pierre, has demanded. That the model of operating on the silos should be abolished. He has encouraged and pushed that we connect with other colleges. So he has destroyed this silo's operation. And taking his charge, I reached out to the College of Agriculture, Family, and Consumer Sciences. So I'll be brief here. In 2023, we established a program that has not been done here in the university and that is only possible in five HBCUs in the whole of the nation. This was a program, I'm not going to read, that allowed students from the IG in collaboration with the courses to complete and get their masters and go for the dietetic examination. In fall 2024, there was a historic commencement where the first three students graduated, can see their names today. This allowed them to register as dietitian nutritionist. The only HBCU that has an intern program that was accomplished by these two colleges. May I remind my audience, the board members, that African Americans only make up 3% of registered politicians in the United States. So what's the university? This new program that I have introduced in collaboration with AgCenter is a very historic accomplishment. Public Administration. That was the first MPA program to be accredited in the state of Louisiana. I repeat, that was the first program to be accredited in the state of Louisiana under my watch. Let me give you a sample of what that program has accomplished. The Master of Public Administration. If you look at the state workforce, 30 to 40% of the workforce come from graduates of the Master of Public Administration. Go check it out. And some of the graduates, the reason I want to mention some of the graduates is that a program is worthless if the graduates cannot be placed or no probe, no agencies, or corporations are looking for the graduate. But I'm here to tell you that as we graduate, they're making heavy impact, palpable, measurable, visible. That's how you know what a program is doing, what it is designed to do. The Master of Public Administration, let me give you just a sample because if I want to list where they are, it would take a whole day today. I know the chairman always is, has, is straight with time, so I'm going to cut it short. The Master of Public Administration, the CEO of the K S South is a graduate. The Assistant Chief Administrative Officer and former physical analyst and Special Project Coordinator for Louisiana State Legislative Physical Office. The Deputy Assistant Secretary for the Louisiana Department of Health and Hospitals. The Executive Director, Louisiana Commission on Human Rights. Executive Director, the Base Board. Section Coordinator, Louisiana Workforce Commission. Regional Manager, Mason Maudes. I can go on and on and on, just to give you a sample where the graduates are found and what they're doing in the community, in the society. Then I move to the doctoral program, the heavyweight. In 1996, I wrote a pro, a proposal that established the public PhD program in the state. And since its inception, it has produced over 260 black PhDs in the nation, the highest you can get from any other university, board members. 260 black PhDs that is making huge impact. You will see the number produced each year next to that. All right. There, at your spare time, you can see the number. I did not add all the PhDs, this is just a sample. But it should be on record that no the university can produce this large number of black PhDs in the nation. And this college is taking the lead. Mr. President, you asked for student outcome. I'm giving you full stewardship of that account. PhDs in public policy. Let me give you a sample of the graduates, as I said before. The mark of a good program is where are the students placed? Are they being sought after? And here, again, you can check it out. The PhD in public policy. Among his graduates, you have at least six Secretaries of State. Let me repeat, Secretaries of State here in Louisiana from this program. Several university vice presidents, Commissioner of State, university president, Vice Chancellor International University as far as Uganda, Deputy Secretaries, Deputy Chief of Staff for a governor, Louisiana's Commission of Higher Education. I'm just giving you samples. And LSU's Vice President of Health and Chief Officer and former Executive Commissioner of the Texas Health and Human Services Commission, former Chief Executive Officer of the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services. The former Secretary of Louisiana Department, who also, who also happens to be the highest publicly funded salary of any woman in the state of Louisiana, is a graduate of the Nessen Mandela Public Policy, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, Dean, so the church, they would say bring their ship on in, but bring it on in, but I'm not being rude, but we got, got some other things.
All right. Then you gotta allow me mention the executive that again I introduced in 2020. That program has produced over 49 black PhDs. Again, allow me mention where those graduates have been placed. Honorable Chair, please allow me that little privilege. It's important the board members know what the college is doing. This new executive weekend PhD program that I introduced in 2020, I want to tell you where some of the graduates have, have placed. Two of them are officials, three time mayor. Three are health executives. One of them serves as the CEO of HSA Healthcare West Florida. One another is CEO of Houston Medical Bytown Hospital. I can go on and on. I'm telling you where the graduates are being placed. I mean, this is what noting, look, at least this is from the executive where they are placed. They are touching. the nation. But the executive PhD could not have worked. You gotta allow me time to give credit to my Chancellor, Chancellor John Pierre. When I introduced that program, I went to my provost then that I need a classroom. If I'm gonna be recruiting executives, charging them 40 to 50,000 a semester and needed a decent classroom where to put them, because the classrooms in the Mandela College was not even fit for high school. So I approached Chancellor Pierre, I need help. This is a new baby. He said, what do you need? I told him, he called his staff. Allow Dr. Iggy access to the classroom in the law school, the technology and the support.
Dean, Dean, three more minutes. Appreciate it. We, this is very profound, but, but we have a lot on the agenda today.
So I wanted to recognize him. Thank you. I will bet your time. Another chancellor that supported me during that time was the chancellor from New Orleans. Chancellor James Emmons, he encouraged and said, this is a wonderful program, go for it. So I want to recognize him for his support. The executive PhD and the PhD program, ladies and gentlemen, is responsible for the Carnegie II institution we have today. So that program is playing a very, very serious honorable role. And we're seeking to go to honorable chair to Carnegie One Institution.
Thanks.
And may I ask you, honorable Attorney Clay, if you can, if you will lay the support for the foundation to go to Carnegie One, which would be spectacular, it would be the first HBCU to attend Carnegie One studies. If you can give the college the support, lay the foundation, let me say very boldly, if that happens, that the benefit would be far greater than the millions you've already donated, if you lay the foundation to achieve this Carnegie One. In summary, then, the rest since is you can see what the program is doing. You can see what I've done. I've, in my, in my office, I have only three. I don't have an associate professor, unlike the other colleges. What I've done is to use the two staff I have, make them my de facto associate deans. They do all the job. Dr. Shemane Williams, Juliette Williams in Alberta, all of them. And for the last five years, honorable chair and board members, I've spent my weekend.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you. And that, this was informative.
At, at this time.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you. Uh, we all know that Dr. Iggy Gary has a passion for organization and growth for the Nelson Mandela College of Government and Social Sciences. So let's give him a round of applause for all of the things he has done. Thank you, and thanks for the continued growth.
Thank you, honorable chair.
He also has prepared a very well organized pamphlet here with all of the things that he has told us today along with some of the other things that they have done. So if you have questions, if you will jot them down and Dr. Iggy Gary, I'll be the one that will deliver it to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
At this time, we're going to move forward. There, we have no other business. I'm gonna ask that our academic affairs be adjourned. May I get a motion?
So moved.
And second.
Attorney Clay.
Before I call the Finance Committee, I'm gonna defer to Dr. Ronnie Whitfield, who has a special presentation for us. Dr. Whitfield?
We'll make it short, guys, but this, this cannot go unannounced. We do have in the audience two very, very special people dedicated to Southern University. Aiden Jones, Aiden, come on up to the mic, young man, please, sir. Aiden Jones is a dedicated and hardworking 7th grade student at the Southern University Laboratory School since 1st grade. A consistent honor roll student, he has maintained an impressive academic record, earning all As and only 1B while demonstrating mastery and advanced proficiency on standardized tests. His favorite subjects are ELA and math where he excels. Beyond academics, Aiden is a talented athlete who plays basketball and was a key player in the, in leading his 6th grade team to a championship victory. He also enjoys watching sports, movies and documentaries that inspire his love for the game. Aiden is an active member of Greater New God Baptist Church where he participates in Sunday School and takes on various speaking roles showcasing his confidence and leadership skills. With big dreams for the future, Aiden aspires to become an NBA player and says that he could easily beat Tony Clayton on one-on-one basketball game. While also owning his own engineering business, so he's gonna play ball and own his own engineering business. He is the son of Ms. Breonna Jones and the grandson of our very own Mr. Russell Jones, Jesse N. Stone Jr. Endowed Professor, former Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs. And Russell Jones is currently leading the Southern University Laboratory School mock trial team into competition, which Tony, I'm truly proud of. Aiden, we did steal your thunder and the most shortest member of our board did the pledge of allegiance, but we just wanna talk to you and say how you're doing, young man, and, and, and what brings you here today, other than to say the pledge? Talk to me.
Um, so, wait, what's your question again, restate it?
What brings you here? How you doing? What you talking about? What's what you think about Southern Lab? We got a championship girls' basketball team and boys, they're well?
Other than that, I can't hear to represent.
That's right, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. And I, y'all support me too, yeah. Cause I'm good at basketball, just you know that.
I'm sure you can, I'm sure you can beat Tony and probably your grandfather as well.
So, Aiden, you said something that you and I have in common. You only have 1B?
Yes, sir.
Me too, throughout my entire career.
Tony had 1B in a lot of other seasons. Aiden, thank you, Attorney Jones, thank you for sharing him with us. We know you have a case to be to, uh, be at, but we appreciate you guys coming. Aiden, very proud of you, keep doing what you're doing. If you were hanging in the back, Doc, wanna take a picture?
Hey, hey, yeah, I wanna take a picture with you, come on.
While we take these pictures, I'm gonna turn it over to Facilities. Is that you, Mr. Donald Ray Henry? You're a meeting. Yes, sir. Mr. Donald Ray Henry, present. Ms. Maple Gaines. Mrs. L. Dudley. Mr. Chris Massingill. Mr. Paul Matthews. Attorney Des Moines Rutledge. Attorney Edwin Shorty.
Here.
Mrs. Ann Smith.
Present.
Dr. Ronnie Whitfield. Attorney Tony Clayton. We have a quorum. Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I need a motion to adopt agenda.
A second.
It's, it's been moved and properly second at this, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Do we have any public comments at this time? Any public comments? Seeing that there's none, we're gonna move on to action item. Uh, we have one approval of the process of Act 751 projects, S U S. I'd like to entertain a motion and then we'll have a discussion. Been moved, been moving properly second. Uh, any discussions on the motion? Yes, we do. We're gonna have Mr. Ken to discuss it and, and we'll have, if we have any questions, we'll, we'll ask him. Mr. Ken?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, President and, and Board Chair and this, um, um, illustrious committee. I just want to let you know that this is dealing with Act 751. When it's saying Act 751 is the legislation that allows us to move a great deal of money into deferred maintenance. Um, because the projects at time can go over a certain amount of dollar amount that requires the president's signature. For instance, there may be a professional services that's needed, it's over 300 and definitely the projects will go over 300. We wanted to set the process in, uh, set a process in that allows the projects to move forward without having board approval. No money comes from the university. All the money is provided by the state. The projects are selected by the selection committee by the state over that number. And even all of the projects that go to deferred maintenance are selected on JLCB. So it really wouldn't require any action here. All of that process is done before. It just allows us to continue to move the process through quickly because we're definitely on a short timeline to get these projects approved and get them under construction.
No question?
Aye.
Sure. I have some good news. I, I like to invite the Public Service Commissioner, Mr. Dante Lewis, who is here to kind of make a very special announcement of what we have going on on the campus. So if you would come up with, with your pleasure, have him to address you for a second.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, as you know, my office has taken significant pride in ensuring that we make everything around us more energy efficient. As you know, uh, looking at lighting, looking at HVAC, looking at all things to ensure that we are consuming less energy um, and making sure that we have a partnership, especially with HBCUs. Since the last time I visited with you, we hosted a HBCU Utility Workforce Summit uh, that President Shields and, and a few others joined us at Dillard University, strengthening the relationship between the workforce talent pipeline and students. And particularly what we realize is the connection with engineering, uh, making sure that we are building the next, uh, great level of engineering students and to talk about efficiencies. And so, um, as you know, we have, uh, done multiple projects with, with this campus already. One with, with the stadium, uh, the library and, um, with the mini dome. Uh, and so today I'm here to, to announce that yesterday I approved 1.4 million dollars to make the PBS Pinchback Engineering Building more energy efficient. Um, what we are going to be funding is, uh, right now, the, the building is running. It's HVACs 24/7, 365 days a year. Um, and so what we are going to do is by installing some new systems, automatic controls, the pumps and fans will run at a lower, more efficient speed. Uh, we will also improve some of the lighting in the building. Um, and we are expecting to reduce the energy consumption by 1.8 million kilowatts. And this would be an annual savings, uh, to the university of 153,357 dollars on their, uh, utility bills. And so, uh, my office has approved, as I said, this, uh, 1.4 million dollar uh, energy efficiency grant for the PBS Pinchback Engineering Building.
Mr. Lewis, I can't thank you enough. You, you, you always here, you're on campus and you put this university first. And you always bringing us some type of, uh, uh, reward in terms of money to help this school chart an even more progressive course. For that, I thank you. As long as the rest of my colleagues.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Uh, Mr. Ken, you gonna continue?
Yes, yes, I will go through quick. And I wanna say that we also have Jaden Wallace here with Synergy, who's also been working with, uh, um, with, um, our commissioner. And we also have Bonton Engineering, who's also been working on our commissioner, making sure all these things happen. Significant savings, a total of about 13 projects that have gone on at that Southern University, at Soonoe Campus. A total savings, I think of 925,000 dollars. So, uh, we're getting benefit from what we're doing and we're getting controls. What I've established is, is that the type of controls that we use will be system wide because we have buildings that have controls that don't even talk to each other. That is being changed, we're doing it system wide. Okay? So just go through quickly, I'm just go probably three or four minutes, won't take long. Uh, I wanna thank everybody for coming out for the groundbreaking of the STEM building. That's what we have there. That project has started, next slide. Uh, of course, the, uh, business building, that project is looking at starting around September. We should be groundbreaking on that project. We have some demolition to do there. The, we have to do the police station demolition and the building behind the police station. That project will start, um, with groundbreak sometime in September. Next slide, please. Uh, the welcome center, as you see, is going up. You pass by that command of overpass on your right. That project is moving forward, next slide. Another, next slide. The amphitheater right across the street here, you start, should, you start, should start to see some elevation on that project soon. It will be coming up, so you're gonna see something that's gonna, uh, gonna be pretty pleasing. Next slide. Next slide. Um, the T S Harris, uh, Learning Lobby, that project has started, is under construction as well on campus. Next slide.
Where is it?
The lobby, it's at T H Harris Hall, right across from the, um, the Union. That, that corridor that used to be open is being enclosed to make it beneficial to the students. It won't be exposed to the weather, when, weather, when they're coming in there and they're registering and things. Um, the poetry building, that's a project that we're doing at the Ag Center. That project is moving forward. The contractor has been selected, they should be mobilizing soon. And that project is going to completely redo that area, which is going, that's somewhat unsightly now, is gonna be, gonna look a lot better. All right, next, next slide. Uh, and I'm sure that I know have some people interested in this. Uh, this is the schematic design of the new Southern University Lab School. So I want you to know, see, take a look at that. We're very excited about where we're going with that. Um, go to the next slide, it shows a couple more pictures of it, how it's gonna look, next slide. So, I mean, this is what we're doing. We, uh, Mr. Brister, I can't thank him enough for his team and how they're working and getting this. We're very excited about what that's going to be and what it's gonna provide to the, to the lab school. Next slide. Uh, very happy to announce, um, Dr. Gant, uh, we just got some good news the other day. You know, we had an issue thinking about the gym at Susler and whether or not we were gonna get that moving forward during this year. I got a call from the state to say that send the, send the, uh, the okay to put this out for bid. So if this project is now out for bid, maybe the next, uh, few weeks, we should have a contractor selected and we'll be doing a groundbreaking at, at our Susler campus. Next slide, please. And, uh, this is something that I, I know that Chancellor Adams is proud of. This is incredible building, this is the nursing center at, uh, and I want to bring that up. That project is into West, it's completed design. So it's, it's ready to move forward and we got some hurdles to go through, but I think we're gonna be successful. But we moving forward with that project as well. Next slide. I just wanted to let you know that what we're trying to do is to make sure we communicate with all of our facility directors throughout the whole system. We're trying to bring more collaboration between the systems. So I will be having a meeting on April 3rd at the Southern Baton Rouge Campus with all facility directors. And I wanna tell them, any other people that they want from the organization or any chancellors that you think that you need to have some people to come, that, um, please invite them there. Also wanna say, we just had a selection committee on the A O Williams Building. An $8 million project was approved. An architect has been selected. And so we will be working on taking care of A O Williams. Plus, we're looking at the temporary campus being provided with offices as well as with, uh, with research labs by the end of the year. That's the plan and that's the goal. Mr. Chairman, that is my report.
One question, can you give us an update on the bowling alley?
On the bowling alley, uh, the, right now, we're out for bid on the roof. The issue with the bowling alley was a situation with the roof, it was leaking on it. That is off a bid, I expect to have those bids in possibly in a couple of weeks. And then we're gonna conselect the contractor and the roof project at the Union will start.
I was asking for Dr. Whitfield, by the way.
Okay.
And I'm asking this for someone else. Uh, I'm gonna borrow, uh, Demond Rutledge, the birthday guy today's phrase. Can you give us a line of sight on, uh, dormitories, building?
That is something that, um, um, I know we've been working and I know the president could give a bit more detailed, uh, synopsis of that.
Yes, we're, we are, uh, in the process, uh, with the foundation. JLL, our partner, has been developing this, has given us several models, ways to go through, has done the due diligence, the market study, the feasibility and, uh, has put together, so we're gonna be moving forward to put out RFQs and RFPs for both the financing and construction, hopefully within the next three to four weeks. Um, I've been pushing them, I'd like to break ground this summer if at all possible. Uh, that's pretty aggressive. Uh, we've lined up a number of, uh, uh, financing partners to, to participate in, in a bid on the project, so God willing, the creek don't rise, we may see some movement on that in the next few months.
God willing and the creek doesn't rise.
Creek don't rise.
I don't know what that means. You are from Wisconsin somewhere. We don't have that many creeks around here. It's called the Mississippi River, but yeah. Gee Willikers.
I just had to give you guys some ammunition. All right, Mr. Ken, thank you very much for your update. Uh, do we have any que- any further questions? No, I just wanted to tell the chairman that the statement the president made, they make that at church. that at church.
Thanks, Ken, for all you and your team, all the great work you did.
Yes, you're doing a super job. We need to give him a round.
Thank you. Thank you.
Super, super job. Oh, at this time, do we have any other business? So moved?
Second.
Then properly moved, meeting adjourned.
Mr. Myron Lawson, what you call the Finance Committee meeting to order.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And the creek don't rise.
That's right. That's right. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Myron K. Lawson.
President.
Mrs. Ann Smith.
President.
Mr. Reggie Abraham.
President.
Attorney Quincy Cawthorn. Mrs. Zell Dudley. Mrs. Maple Gaines. Mr. Chris Massingale. Attorney Des Moines Rutledge. Attorney Tony Clayton.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number three is adoption of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda as printed? Okay, so no one called forward. We'll entertain a motion for item number three, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion? Moved by Board Member Smith, probably seconded by Board Member Dudley. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries, opposed? Okay. Four, public comments. Are there any public comments pertinent to the agenda as adopted? Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll go to item number five, which is informational items. I've spoken with our Vice President of Finance. It's in your report. It's perfunctory. No changes. So with that being the case, we'll move to item number six. There any other business that needs to come before the Finance Committee? When it responds, we go to item number seven, adjournment. Is there a motion? No second need. Okay, need. Okay, considers adjourned, Mr. Chair.
My friend from New Orleans, you called order personnel affairs, Mr. Edwin Shorty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Roll call, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Edwin Shorty.
President.
Mrs. Maple Gaines. Mr. Reggie Abraham. Mrs. Zell Dudley. Mr. Chris Massingale. Attorney Des Moines Rutledge. Mrs. Ann Smith. Mr. Henry Whitehorn. Attorney Tony Clayton.
President.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. Making a motion to adopt the agenda. Properly moved and seconded. Any public comment? Any public comment germane to the Personnel Affairs Committee? Seeing no public comments, we'll move on to action item 5A, request approval of personnel action of positions greater than $100,000 for the system. Can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Sheriff Whitehorn, seconded by Ms. Dudley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That action item is approved. Any other business for the Personnel Affairs Committee? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved and properly seconded, we adjourn.
All right, board members, y'all want to go, keep going all the way through? You want a break?
Rock and roll.
Let's go through. Southern University Board of Supervisors now called to order. Mr. President, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Attorney Tony Clayton.
Here.
Mr. Reggie Abraham.
Here.
Ms. Dana Bailey.
Present.
Attorney Quincy Cawthorn. Mrs. Zell Dudley. Mrs. Maple Gaines. Mr. Donald Ray Henry.
Present.
Mr. Myron K. Lawson.
Certainly.
Mr. Chris Massingale. Mr. Paul Matthews. Attorney Des Moines Rutledge. Attorney Edwin Shorty.
Present.
Mrs. Ann A. Smith.
Present.
Reverend Dr. Samuel Tolbert. Dr. Ronnie Whitfield. Mr. Henry Whitehorn. We have a quorum.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'll entertain any motion to modify. If not, motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Smith, seconded by Mr. Rutledge. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Nay. Hearing none. We move on to public comments. I got a call from a young lady, but the matter that you wanted to talk about is not on the board agenda. But I'll be happy to talk to you about that afterwards. But you can't talk about it unless there's something on the agenda. But I'll meet with you after the board meeting, if that's okay. All right? Let's move to resolutions. Dr. Vitale, is he here?
Here.
There he is.
All right, we have six resolutions of condolence this morning. Aurelius Martinez led the first group of black students into Baton Rouge High School on September 3rd, 1963. As the district began integration, he passed away at age 78 on February 11th. Mr. Larry Ferdinand Sr. earned a Bachelor of Science in Mathematics from Southern University. He was a member of the Southern University Board of Supervisors from 1980 to 1986. His commitment to education was evident through his tenure as Executive Director in Corporate and Business Relations, Executive Director of Continuing Education, and Chief Administration, State of Operations Officer in the Office of the Chancellor at Southern University Shreveport. He passed away on February 26th. Caleb Jaden Wilson was a junior at Southern University in Baton Rouge, majoring in Mechanical Engineering and a beloved member of the Southern University Human Jukebox. Caleb was a talented trumpeter player and dedicated student with a bright soul. Caleb poured his passion into both his studies and his time with the human jukebox. He was an incredible part of the Jaguar family. His energy spirit and impact on those around him will never be forgotten. He passed away on February 27th. Dr. Gaynail C. Young pursued higher education at Southern University, earning a Bachelor's of Arts in Liberal Studies, followed by a Master's Degree in Interpersonal and Public Communications from Bowling Green State University in Bowling Green, Ohio. In exemplary display of perseverance, she obtained her PhD in Public Policy at the age of 67 in 2023 from Southern University. She passed away on March 2nd. Cynthia Jane Rowe Dartess, sister of Dr. Luria Young, Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs, passed away on March 8th. Margaret Ann Stiles Ambrose began her career in public education in Rapids and Avoyles Parishes, and later transitioned to higher education, where she served in various capacities at Southern University, rising through the ranks. She held positions, including Assistant Professor of English, Assistant to the Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs, Assistant to the Chancellor, Executive Associate to the System President, and Executive Vice Chancellor and Interim Chancellor of Southern University and A&amp;M College. She passed away on March 16th. Mr. Chairman, this concludes the resolutions for this morning.
You've heard the resolutions. Can I get a motion to accept? Moved by Mr. Rutledge, seconded by Mr. Lawson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. The resolution passed. Dr. Vitale, I'd like to address this to you, Chancellor. I spoke, I think, to my vice and Mr. Rutledge maybe, but at some point, maybe by the next board meeting, I would like for us to consider putting a plaque on a pedestal in the courtyard by the Union, and calling it Caleb's Courtyard, a place where kids can go and meditate, whatever they want to do. And I would like to have it done where Board Member Dana can unveil it to the student body before she leaves the board. So let's think about it. We'll talk about it later. I just want to put it on you guys' mind. But I think Dana would like to do that on behalf of that student and present it to the entire student body. I think it'd be a great courtyard, named after him. And so I know I'm out of timing when I just wanted to place it on your mind. And if you will, Vitale, the rest of you guys, place it on the agenda. I'd like to see it done before Ms. Dana leaves the board.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sir. If I could, I was wondering, Caleb was a junior engineering student. I would like to either place on the agenda or figure out what the, how to best award him his degree, posthumously. I know we've done it in the past, and I don't know if we need to put it on the Academic Affairs Agenda, or if we do it as a full, on the full board agenda. But I would like to propose that he receive his degree.
I support that wholeheartedly, Chancellor. And if you would give me a response, or Mr. Shorty, because I think we can do it. But if we can legally, I would like to have that placed on the agenda, because the young man was obviously on the trajectory to finish up here and for the unfortunate incident. I think that would be a great gesture on our part. Thank you, Mr. Shorty, for bringing that up. But if it's permissible, then let's look into it.
Yeah. Yes, sir. So we have the posthumous and honorary agreement. We'll go through it and we'll take care of it.
Young lady, this not on the agenda. And listen, I'm going to talk, excuse me, ma'am.
I know you guys are speaking Caleb Wilson's name, and I wanted to make sure that...
Listen, don't do it that way. I'll talk to you afterwards. Thank you. Ma'am, can I, can I please? We're going to deal with it, ma'am. Ma'am.
It's on the agenda.
Don't, let her, guys, leave it alone. It's good. We're going to talk about it, okay?
It's on the agenda.
And we will deal with it. Thank you, ma'am. Let's go to the next item. Action item, request for approval of minutes of February 21st board meeting. Been properly moved. Can I hear the second item, 6A and 6B, moved and seconded properly by Reggie and moved by Mr. Rutledge? All in favor? Any opposition? Information item. Let's move to information item 7A, update to the board policy website. Would that be you, Mr. President? Or the Chancellor?
B. This is Dr. ...
Good morning, Ms. Chairman, Vice Chair Abraham, Mr. President, distinguished board members. In honor of a request that Board Member Rutledge had put in for a policy query system, our IT department has put together a fabulous search engine, works with two ways, keyword search or a policy classification search. I had a chance to preview it, and they'd like to share a demonstration, a quick demonstration, right now. All right, so here is, it's in demo form, it's in beta form. They put in a few policies. Keyword search, Mr. Rutledge, in this case, we save. Let's put in the word "education." And right there, that pulls up distance education, class attendance policy. We'll do another example. That's the evidence of the policy. We'll use another keyword search. Let's say one dealing with speech, based on the sample they put in the database, that pulls up immediately uniform policy speech on campus free speech. And we'll do a quick third example. Very good. Third word search is emotional, and it pulls up the policy on service and emotional animal support for our students. So at this point, based on the beta version of this, the keyword search engine works very well. It pulls up every policy that was put into the database system. Quick example during the search, using a policy classification system, using legal affairs and legislative affairs, the policies that exist under those two, you see evidence of... That concludes the demonstration, Mr. Rutledge. The intent now, it's in beta form, in the next 30 days, IT will sit down, will put in all the policies that have been approved since 2018 in the new policy template. Those will be loaded into the database, will run that by the president, and then they'll be ready to go live. That concludes our presentation.
Question, Mr. Lawson?
Thank you, Dr. Penning. That's certainly a great start. And, but Ms. Carey is up here. There. We have a lot more work to do on our website, quite frankly. And I said that recently in discussion with the president, I think it was, maybe the chancellor, that we have not adequately staffed her area. I think you're responsible for most of the content, am I correct? That's unbelievable. You can't do that. We can't provide, this is the front line to our university. So I'm saying, as we go into the next budget season, I'm going to be looking for us to put some more muscle into that area, because that's the first thing that students are going to do, is search our website. So, Mr. Chair, if you will, let's make that a focus, that we can address it not only for searching for content, but certainly to make it more attractive. It may take us contracting the service out, quite frankly, or either, as I said, add a lot more muscle to it. Ms. Carey, you disagree?
No, sir.
Okay. I think it'll be hard to disagree with that. To pull it up the way you guys just did, it should be interactive. It should be chatable, if that's where, where kids can engage and someone can talk to them. And you ought to have pictures. I mean, it has to be a website. Google minds, nola injuries dot com. And 30 minutes, films, testimony. I mean, that's the way you do a website nowadays. So let's put some money into it. And I guess Mr. Rutledge is satisfied from what y'all just, but I know Mr. Rutledge, he's going to call me later, and he's going to talk about it. So, but, but let's try to see if we can, we've got the technology up here and the talent to do it. So let's get the kids involved, let's get the computer science department, and make a real reputable website.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions for this website piece? Let's go to informational item B, presidential report.
So I want to make sure and address a couple of things that came up at the last board meeting. We have, I would ask, at your request, request the board to engage an external consultant to review our structure and look for savings and other opportunities. We have reached out to a consultant. General Counsel and I had a conversation with them. We've drafted a scope of work. We're in negotiations with them. I think I, we sent out to the assigned people, the work that's been done. We hope to complete the commitment there and then get to work almost immediately on that. The consultant is Dr. Charlie Naum, is a very distinguished educator and leader, former president of North Carolina Central. And he will probably be making at least one visit to Baton Rouge and probably the other campuses to visit with the chancellors and others. And I will certainly introduce him to you, Mr. Chairman. But that's moving forward. Already discussed the progress on the residence hall for Baton Rouge campus. We've been scanning our federal grants, been a lot of moving parts. We now know how much money we've drawn down, how much may be at risk. But at any given moment in this administration, if you have the wrong word in the wrong place, it can be canceled. Right now, through this fiscal year, we've drawn down about 60% of the money that are part of the grants for this year. Is that pretty accurate? But we're monitoring that. Each of the chancellors are monitoring that on an ongoing basis. So if you've obligated money and expended the resources, making the call for it before it gets taken out of our access. Already heard a pretty complete and exciting report by Mr. Dawson about the extraordinary investments that are being made in the campuses across the system. I would just, it's, it's going, over the next six to eight months, I think, on all, all the campuses, it's going to be pretty exciting to come and see the things that are happening. And thanks to this board, to the legislature, to the Black Caucus, to the chancellors, to our facilities team, moving forward. I'm, interestingly enough, most excited about the deferred maintenance, because that's, that work will probably have the most immediate impact on the nature and quality of the experience that our students have here. And that's an ongoing project. You approve something that's very important, because that's going to move very quickly, moving forward. Just so you know, we have about $170 million in deferred maintenance in line to be addressed over the next two and a half to three years. The legislative agenda, we're, I've been meeting with legislators. We have a work group that includes internal staff and both of our consultants. Right now, we're trying to nail down the commitments that were made in the special session in November, which would garner us at least $7 million. And if, if the constitutional amendment passes, would add an additional $3 million in recurring dollars moving forward. Top priorities in our work is to establish for SUNO an increase in the base budget of $3 million, as opposed to us having to go back every year and get one-time money. That money's been put in the budget, I think, five consecutive... and, uh, get, get, uh, one-time money. That, that money's been put in the budget, I think, five consecutive years. I'd like to get that firmly enshrined in our, uh, budget for SUNO, because it's absolutely critical for them moving forward. In addition to, if the constitutional amendment goes through, uh, we need to keep after them about this, uh, disparate funding and, and garner commitments for building our base outside of the funding formula. When you talk about, well, we ought to spend more on websites and we ought to spend more money on this and our financial services, that's base funding. You know, you can't do that with, uh, one-time money. And so we're gonna be focusing on that and we appreciate the support of, of the board in every way. It's gonna be very interesting. Uh, all bets are off if the constitutional amendment doesn't pass. So I think there's some reason to pick at a bit, but overall, it puts us ahead of the game. And so anything you can do to support, uh, uh, passage of that, uh, amendment two, it's really critical to, uh, our, uh, thriving, uh, as the institution. The economic development districts, I think I signed the, the documents today that would, we would start, uh, being able to collect the taxes. Uh, and so that's pretty exciting. It's another tool in our toolbox to move forward. I'll end my report there. There's some other things we'll talk about in the executive session.
Mr. Lawson?
Can you, uh, discuss a little bit? I don't know if the members are aware. I don't know if the members are aware where we are with the, uh, RFP for food service.
The RFP is out? Mr. McClinton, can you detail exactly where we are in that process?
Right. Starting this week, we'll be going to the, we're inviting the companies in and they'll be visiting the various campuses. So that's where we are now. They come in, they, we allow them to look at the campuses and make any, uh, ask any questions they wanna ask. Once that is done, then that's when they'll go back in and submit to us what they're, you know, what they are proposing.
How many entities have expressed an interest, do you know?
Not right off. I think, I think it's either three or four. I can get that information. But it's about three or four at this point, the last time I checked. But I can have that information before you, before I leave, before you leave today.
Mr. President, my question is, the lost Senator Chancellor contract, has that been finalized?
No, no, it hasn't. I'm trying to assemble the meeting, the group of the people that you, uh, asked me to consult with and we'll try to execute on that as quickly as possible.
Sounds great. Any other questions to President, Mr. Rutledge?
Correctly, that the irish seed of the seven million is contingent upon passage of amendment number two?
No, that's not the agreement that was made. Uh, but that's not etched into a statute yet or into the budget. That's the commitment that the governor made at, during the special session.
As I look at Mr. Rutledge and Mr. Al with his powder blue suit on, the vernal equinox came through several hours ago, so you guys okay for spring? But you barely made it, it's on like those suits. Chancellor reports. They barely made it, Dr. McMeans. Al's waiting to get me. I ain't Chancellor. Sorry. Chancellor, we'll start with you, Chancellor Gann, you're first.
Honorable Board Chair Clayton, Vice Chair Abraham, and the Honorable Members of the Southern University Board of Supervisors. First, I would like to start my, uh, report out by thanking this board for approving our reimagined 2030 strategic plan for 25 to 2030. Uh, that plan will really put us on course to, uh, move the institution forward, uh, with our seven priorities that we're focusing on, number one being academic excellence. Next month, early April, we plan to, uh, host a kickoff for the strategic plan, so the entire team will understand where we're going and we'll be developing those implementation plans, uh, moving forward. So thank you again for that. I would also like to, uh, mention that our, we were honored to have President Shields on campus last month, where he shared his, uh, pillars and put his leadership pillars with the entire leadership team. And so those pillars and some of the information, uh, in the strategic plan here at Southern University Shreveport is how we laid out our plan, um, our strategic plan as well. We had, uh, we were honored to have our Commissioner, Higher Education Commissioner, Dr. Kim Hana-Reed on campus with the HBCU Summit, uh, this month. Where she, I mean, where the entire team kind of focused on how we would move our HBCUs forward and how important HBCUs are in this culture that we're in now and shaping education and workforce. Uh, the other thing I would like to report, and lastly, is that Southern University Shreveport is experiencing, has experienced an enrollment increase of approximately seven percent, uh, from this, over this time last year. And we're continuing to implement strategies to increase enrollment and we have a focus on our FTEs, uh, on campus. And I wanna say a special thank you to faculty, staff, and students at Southern University, uh, for their support in this effort. Because our students also help us recruit at Southern University at Shreveport. Uh, you have a copy of the Chancellor's report, uh, for your review for further information. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Chancellor, the President leaned over me, leaned over to me just now and said, she's doing great work up there. And I'm looking at this and I echo that. I concur. I concur with you on that, Mr. President. Any other questions of Chancellor Gann? You do? No, who's that said I do? Oh, you're good. Uh, Sheriff, Lady Zell, any questions for your Chancellor from up north?
No questions, but, uh, you're doing a great job, continuing to get work. And as always, if you need us for anything, me in particular, I'm here to support you and help any way that I can. Thank you.
Ms. Dudley, are you having any problems with the sheriff, keeping him, keeping him checked up there? You, you all good?
Yo, he has me trained.
Any comments, Sheriff?
Uh, no questions. Uh, I had an opportunity to attend the Founder's Day celebration, uh, this week up at Southern University and it was outstanding as well. Great speaker and, uh, just a wonderful program. Thanks.
No other questions? Dr. Ammons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Vice Chair Abraham, Honorable Members of the Board, President Shields and colleagues. Uh, one of the things that President Shields referred to, uh, during his report was the federal grant arena. There has been a significant change in the, uh, policy of the Trump administration as it relates to the awarding of COVID dollars. There were, uh, three acts that provided dollars to colleges and universities across the nation, uh, during COVID. And they are now referred to as higher education emergency relief funds. The change is, is that, uh, as of about three weeks ago, in order for an institution to receive those HERF funds, we have to spend the money first and then get reimbursed. So we are now on what they call the reimbursement payment structure. That particular policy change is impacting our nursing building. Uh, we were able to draw down, uh, Ms. Gaines, the million dollars for the architectural design. So the designs have been completed one hundred percent. We now have the eighteen million dollars for construction. That is now a part of this new reimbursement payment structure. SUNO doesn't have eighteen million dollars to spend and then get reimbursed. And so as, uh, Mr. Uh, Dawson was talking about some hurdles that we had to go over on the nursing building, that's it. And we're in communication with our program officer. Um, she is one of the two thousand that remains and we have been communicating every day. We have submitted documents to her to include the invoice from Facilities Planning and Control requesting the eighteen million dollars from SUNO, so that they can put the building out to bid. Uh, we communicated just this morning, she said the invoice from, uh, Facilities Planning and Control is being reviewed. However, we have a, an April first deadline to close out HERF projects, uh, here in the state of Louisiana and perhaps across the nation. So that's one of the issues that, uh, we are navigating, uh, right now, and it is critical, that we get the eighteen million dollars and have the ability to draw it down, uh, from the Department of Education. But other than that, uh, things are, uh, are moving, uh, at the institution. Uh, the President joined us, um, uh, last week, uh, as we hosted, uh, members of the legislative delegation from New Orleans. Uh, Senator Joe Bowie, uh, former Chancellor of SUNO was with us and we had a representative from Representative Board's office. But we talked about our legislative, uh, priorities. The three million dollars recurring is the number one priority for SUNO. Uh, we have been requesting those dollars and they have actually been appropriated for several years now. But again, as the President said, we have to go back every year to request the three million dollars. And so it's not, you know, once it becomes recurring, it's not a net gain to the institution, it's keeping us level funding. So that's the number one priority, uh, that we have for the institution. And then to rebuild that evening and weekend college, which is so much a part of the history of SUNO, uh, to provide opportunities for prospective students who have jobs, families, to be able to come to the institution face to face and attain a degree. And that would be in addition to the online, eight online courses, uh, that we offer. I am continued, I am, I continue to be, uh, proud of our faculty and students, especially the work that, uh, is going on in classrooms and in laboratories at the institution. And we get news, uh, for instance, that we have a student in social work, Nicholas Harrison, who has a four point O GPA, uh, he's a senior. And he has been accepted to Columbia University, Tulane University, LSU, and also the program in social work at, at SUNO. We're also having our McNair Scholars, uh, continue to engage in research in our social work program with their innovative research program called the Friendship Bench. Where we have grandparents sitting on benches, uh, throughout the region, providing counseling and support to those who need, um, uh, mental, social, and other types of support. And then lastly, uh, about two weeks ago, we opened a new gallery in our museum. The, uh, Dr. John DiCarbo collection now resides in the SUNO Museum of Art. Dr. DiCarbo is, uh, the late Dr. DiCarbo is a former professor of African-American art, uh, who lived in New York. His family, uh, at his, uh, request, awarded the collection to an HBCU. Uh, we didn't know the DiCarbo family, but the DiCarbo family, out of all the HBCUs in the country that they were considering, gave the collection to SUNO Museum of Art. And I invite all of you to come and to see this collection of African artifacts, uh, that now reside, uh, on our campus. It is, uh, just out of this world. And so with that, Mr. Chair, I conclude my report.
Chancellors, I think all of you should collaborate with Corey Blatch. In nineteen seventy-four, Congress passed an act, it's called the Empowerment Control Act of nineteen seventy-four. And what it did was, it disallowed, it was President Nixon back then, him to use executive powers to strip budgets from agencies throughout the country. I've heard no one bring up this empowerment act, but it puts a chilling effect on any president for funds that have already been allocated for something, and you just can't come in and say, do Executive Board to stop it. Read into it, talk to the lawyers, and, uh, but y'all gotta, y'all gotta use that tool to fight back. But anyway, with that, Mr. McMeans.
Thank you, Chairman Clayton, uh, Vice Chairman, uh, President Shields and honorable board members. This is actually, uh, National Ag Week, uh, and Tuesday was, uh, National Ag Day, and I was really proud that our students led, uh, uh, an open house in which we had, uh, potential students, who are interested in majoring in agriculture, as well as their parents, uh, and parents who, uh, have young people interested. And it was a hundred percent led by our students and I was just so proud of our students and, uh, I'm, I'm braggadocious about the fact that, uh, the, the reigning SGA President and Ms. Southern are both, uh, in the College of Agriculture, so I will tout that. And President and I met the other day and he said, oh, what's, what's gonna happen when those two leave? I said, we got something behind them. Uh, because we are about, uh, ag leaders and so we will grow the next generation. And I, I've found, uh, as a scientist, that students are our number one recruiters, uh, as it relates to that. And that's why we doubled our enrollment in the last four years, because those students go back to Chicago and Detroit and Houston, Miami, Atlanta, and tout about the great things and the family-oriented atmosphere that we have, uh, in the College of Agriculture and in the, and the Ag Center. A, a bit of good news from, uh, the federal side. I know some of you guys already know. Amazingly, we just received, uh, four new grants totaling one point six million dollars.
Did y'all read them? Ain't no transgender stuff here.
I'm sorry.
Transgenic. Nah. No, um, they are, uh, two of them are based on, uh, Mr. Clayton, and we will talk about this, Attorney Clayton, uh, uh, on our ethnology program, wine making, uh, uh, an individual in this room has made a commitment that they would support that program. I'm not gonna call any names.
You're gonna drink the wine, I'm gonna tell you that now.
Yeah, well, well. So, a- and the other two are both about students, experiential, hands-on learning from our undergraduates and the other one recruiting students. And so we're happy about that and, uh, we applaud the Secretary in awarding us those grants. But also, uh, a number of you called me personally, uh, the USDA Scholars Program was restored. Uh, not only was it restored, we have the largest number of scholars, uh, in the, eh, eighteen ninety system with twenty-five. We had over forty individuals apply to Southern. Normally they go in a portal and they place them. These forty young people applied to the College of Agriculture. And that, that bodes well for us as it relates to our growth in the College of Ag. The, the other thing I, I wanted to, uh, finish on was, um, we, we also, uh, out of all the USDA lines, there was only one line that received an increase in the CR. And that was an eight percent increase in, uh, federal funding for research and extension. And so we, we're really excited about that. No other lines were increased in the entire USDA budget. And so our advocacy is paying off. And last but not least, I wanna thank, uh, and I hope his head doesn't get too big, but, uh, Mr. Ken Dawson. Miss, look, um, twenty-five years worth of, uh, building that facility and, and, and Chairman, you and I talked about the building that A. O. Williams Building wrong way in many different ways. Uh, we are finally getting the ears of the, uh, the Governor and the Administration. And, uh, the eight million dollars is gonna go a long ways in, uh, righting the wrong of that building. But the seven million dollars for temporary housing for our research program is gonna go a long way, because we have excellent individuals. And not only that, there's further commitments of investing, uh, in research. And as a research scientist, I think it's important that we understand that, um, investing in agriculture and investment in the US, in the US. And US security and ag security go hand in hand. So we are pushing the Administration to continue to invest in us. So, thank you, and that concludes my report.
Can I ask, um, the ARS Research Facility, is that still on track?
We met with them yesterday. So we deal with, uh, four- So we deal with four USDA agencies. Three of the four retired last, in the last two weeks. And the one that's only left, he's a graduate of the, of Southern University College of Agriculture. He is the chief of the Forest Service. I just learned last night after talking to a colleague of mine who's in town and gave kudos to you Chancellor Pierre on your speech yesterday, that he is getting ready to retire as well. And so we got a, had a conversation yesterday and it was the tone, not necessarily what they said. They said, we're still interested in building this eighty million dollar facility. However, everything is under review right now. And we will be talking to you soon. And so, it's unfortunate, but we, we hope to continue to move that. The only great thing about it is that the Speaker has signed on and said he will support. And Speaker of the House. And so I, I think that it still has a little, some legs, but it's quite challenging right now. But it's, it's not DEI research, it's, you know, it's, it's basic research. And so we have to continue to tell them that because it's under Southern University and because it's under eighteen ninety universities. And I told the President, we had, we had a meeting of all of the eighteen nineties. Guys, you think what Southern has witnessed? There, there was a university that went without money for over a month as it relates to payroll. The stories are really scary. A and T and, and West Virginia State and all, and these, and Tennessee State. It's scary. So we actually are blessed for some of the situations that we've gone through because none of it has impacted our base funding.
Thank you. Any questions, Dr. McMeans? Seeing or hearing none, Chancellor Washington?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Board Members, Mr. President. The Louisiana Supreme Court heard our arguments at Southern University Law Center on March seventeenth. It went well. Chairman Clayton was in attendance. We had great participation by our students. And Chairman Clayton and I are going to provide scholarships to the top three students who write opinions with respect to the cases that were heard. They heard four cases there. One of our very own, John Michael Gettrick is now a member of the Louisiana State Supreme Court. So he heard his first arguments at the Southern University Law Center. And that was great. Our faculty has reviewed the most recent board exams. We put them in breakout rooms and they went through the board exams to make sure that we have been covering all of the topics that are tested on the board exam. So that's one of the things that we're doing. We are in the admissions process now. So some of you guys, we're getting calls from applicants wanting to know the status. And we are reviewing all of the applications. We are, we are trying to get the best students that we can. And at the same time, we're trying to provide opportunities for students. So you're gonna get some calls because we have not been able to make decisions about some students because there is a priority that we're giving to our higher achieving students. And in furtherance of that, we're gonna be hosting recruitment events around the state. As I said before, we lose about three hundred students. Students who we admit and they don't show up. They enroll somewhere else. So we're trying to keep most of those students because most of those students are higher achieving students. So Board Chair Clayton has agreed to host an event in Baton Rouge on March twenty-eighth. We will also host a recruiting event in Shreveport on April the ninth. Board Member Shorty has agreed to host an event in New Orleans. And Board Member Carthorn has agreed to host an event for us in Lafayette. And we also have an alum who will host an event for us in Lake Charles. And we're trying to find somebody in Monroe. We'll be celebrating Alumni Roundup starting April the third. We'll have our Judicial Wall of Fame unveiling ceremony where we'll be adding three judges to our judicial wall at the law school. We'll also have a distinguished alum reception that Thursday night. And we'll send this around to the board. April the fourth, we will have our golf tournament. So I know we have some golfers on the board. I just sent the President of Lincoln, Vice Chair Abraham, I know he plays golf. And Shorty plays golf. So I don't know who else plays, but y'all can come and ride the courts if you don't play. April fifth, we'll have a Hall of Fame Gala. And Board Member Quincy Carthorn is going to be inducted in the Hall of Fame. This year, he'll be joining the other SULC graduates who are already Hall of Fame members. So congratulations to you. That's our report. Thank you.
The most interesting part of this, these talks, I want to hear from Mr. Darren, the Alumni Foundation. You're next, Mr. Darren. Oh, no, he was sleeping, I thought. I didn't want to wake him up, but he was like. Chancellor Pierre?
Yes, sir. Chairman Clayton, Vice Chancellor Abraham, President and members of the board. I just want to point out, you have the report, but I want to point out a few things. Obviously, this is Founder's Month. We have gone through several churches on Sundays to celebrate our Founder's Month, including Greater Philadelphia Baptist Church, Living Faith. And we will be actually at two churches this Sunday. Camper United Methodist Church and Rose Hill Baptist. And then Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church the fifth Sunday. We had an alum, Wilson Fields, who was become part of the First Circuit Court of Appeal. We had an investigator, he had an investigator this week and very proud of him. Next weekend, we have academic homecoming. First time we've ever tried to do this. Dr. Young and members of the academic team have been working on that. And we look for that to be successful. Hopefully that will become a tradition along with other things. I know we're collaborating with the Alumni Federation with academic signing and so forth and so on. We did lose another student last week tragically. Jeremiah passed. And we'll have more details on that. And in addition to that, I believe Chairman Clayton, your firm got a historic judgment, jury verdict, maybe a couple of weeks ago. And I believe it is the largest individual jury verdict in the history of the state of Louisiana. Somebody told me it was in excess of four hundred million dollars. That's what they told me. And I just want to congratulate you.
But, but, all right, go ahead. I won't pick on you again.
But I want to congratulate you because I believe.
And I probably shouldn't talk about that, but I'm gonna talk about it.
But I believe now your verdicts are number one and number two.
It is.
You broke your own record.
But let me say something about Southern Law Center. It's because of that law center. Guys, I'm nothing. But that law center, particularly you Chancellor, prepared us. And I see it every day with Southern law students. And I see, as the DA across the river, I see them from all over. Southern lawyers are much more prepared. And I'm not hating on the other schools, but they bring in these Harvard guys and had some real guys against me in that, that last verdict we made. But it's because of that law school. I'm telling you, it's the law school. So I thank you Chancellor, both of you guys. But I'll put your students up anytime. Matter of fact, I'm afraid, when I see a Southern kid coming against me in trial, I get nervous.
And then I want to congratulate our women's basketball team. A great victory. They were composed and poised. And then our men's basketball team is a regular season champion for SWAC. Although they did not get the opportunity to play in the tournament. Again, I think we've had an outstanding season with our basketball teams, men and women. And they're to be commended.
I'd also like to shout out the women's, the women's bowling team. Who's in Dallas, Texas, that will be playing tonight, or today, tomorrow. And they won the SWAC regular season championship and now they have a SWAC championship. They're going to the big tournament. They were losing four seasons this year. We all regretted it and made the decision to go on very well back then. So looking forward to seeing them, who is away from Oklahoma. Because they beat teams that were ranked already in regular season. Like to come out and progress. But you know, very different teams will win. So I want to thank you, checking on the bowling talent.
Mr. Lawson?
I was gonna say, we had coaches other year too.
All that's coming under your tutelage, Mr. President. You've, you've winning some championships, you're building buildings. So, you know, I used to talk about you, but you're doing all right now. All right, you finished? Any questions, Chancellor Pierre? Next to you, alumni.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I offer congratulations too. It's good to hear that you.
And I don't have no more money, we broke.
I have to ask. It's my job to ask. But thank you. This, this month, I've submitted a written report, but I just want to highlight a couple of things. One is a thing I'm pretty excited about is our partnership with Pelican Bank, well, Credit Union, sorry. Since the inception of the program, the growth of members that have received the SU cards, but logo cards of over two thousand. And we've only been in it for a few months. They brought us a check. We did a check presentation the other day for three thousand. And that's just a couple of months, thirty-three hundred dollars. And they told us we're pacing now at around five thousand dollars in the first quarter even up. So we're excited about that extra revenue for us to be able to put into some in operations. But more importantly, provide money to students that come to our door. Then you are, you are witness, Mr. Chair, of how students come through with challenges. And we want to be able to help them. Do want to put on your radar and advise you that we're planning a leadership conference, the Federation, this summer, the last weekend in June in Shreveport. Board Member Dudley said, I don't come to Shreveport anymore. But we're bringing all alumni to Shreveport in June for the Leadership Conference. You'll get more information on it and invitations, especially on the local level. We've been working and I'd like to thank publicly Chancellor Gant for the support they've given us thus far in, in planning that at her campus and some of her staff, as well as alumni in the Shreveport area. Looking forward to that. Another thing I want to put on your radar. Of course, you know, we're planning in Atlanta this year. The SWAC ME Act Challenge. I've been working with the alumni in Atlanta to plan a weekend to engage alum. Just some of the preliminary things. We're looking at doing a golf tournament that weekend. Having hospitality and some fundraising, if you will, and tailgating. But as the events and plans are more concrete, will give you a more solidified plan. But we, and also be sending you information on Host Hotel. And don't worry, Mr. Chairman, it's not gonna be a roach motel this time. And finally, with the help of the Foundation, we put out a mail up because increasing our membership is certainly something focused on. And we've sent out a mail up recently and got great response. We're in the initial stages and do some other things to kind of increase our membership and get more members engaged. I think in these times, in this climate, we more than ever need the support of our alumni across the country. But that completes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to see you talk to Ken Dawson about renovating that alumni house. We've been talking about it for years. After every board meeting, Mr. Darren hosts us over there. So if y'all not doing anything, got a little extra time after board meetings. He has refreshments and food for us over there. Mr. Harrell, Foundation?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll be brief. We submitted a written report to you as well, ending the first quarter. First quarter doesn't end for us until March thirty-first. So that's an abridged copy of our first quarter report. Just to highlight a few projects that are on the table for us right now. We have a big emphasis on endowment. Our current portfolio market value is right at about twenty-seven million. Last year, we had a good year in the market, about thirteen point five percent return year to date. Since inception, a little bit north, six point eight percent. In two thousand and twelve, our endowment was right at about nine million. And we're at twenty-seven million now. So that's about a hundred and forty percent growth over that period of time. Our benchmark to keep up with other like-sized universities is about a hundred million dollars. So over the next five years, right, that's where we're trying to grow to. And we're encouraging a lot of our donors to consider making deep investments in endowment. As we go through trying times, right, as a business, as an organization, the sustainability that endowed funds and the interest earned from that gives to the institution to put stopgaps in place is really important. So you'll hear more about that. Bayou Classic, last year, we grossed six point three million dollars. The most that the Bayou Classic has grossed in its entire fifty-year history. That was north of about a hundred thousand dollars from the fiftieth anniversary. We have paid most of our bills and have received the ancillary income and should be receiving the income to forward over to the university in the next thirty days. The UL Board, just as you did, approved the CEA for two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand twenty-nine. So we're planning for the Bayou Classic this year. The Foundation is right now working with the Athletic Department to install a new turf field at Mumford Stadium. As you may recall, seven years ago, we installed the turf field that's there now at a cost of about eight hundred thousand dollars. Inflation has hit us, that's gonna cost us about one point three million now. It has a seven-year warranty. And so we are in year seven. And so we're replacing that turf this year in Mumford Stadium. That construction will hopefully start in May of this year. Our capital campaign updates, two hundred and seventy-seven million in commitments. You heard a number of the projects that Mr. Dawson named. That included the public side of it. It's about eighteen projects that we have involved in the capital campaign. And we're moving along well there. We're in year two of a seven-year campaign, looking to raise a little bit north of seven hundred and fifty million dollars. We are currently still in the silent phase of that campaign. Our consultant firm is working with the Foundation and the President. We've identified a hundred and fifty-six pay center prospects who have an evaluation of five hundred thousand dollars or more. And we are meeting with those individuals now and organizations getting those commitments on the front end. We had some good news this week. We have a large gift that we are not going to announce right now, but we're really, really excited about it. That's coming from those meetings. Last but not least, the President mentioned student housing. We are meeting with the JLL Capital Markets Group that's identifying financial institutions, right? And we're looking, before we issue the RFQ for financial services, to get a take on how the market is responding to the financial models that JLL has put in our student housing component. The timeline for that, we hope to issue Financial Services RFQ at the end of this month. And then following that, immediately following that, the RFQ for construction services. JL presented to us three different financial models in this order. Self-bill, that's where the Foundation would serve as developer and help the university to build those and secure the finances as well as the construction management team to build the dorms. as well as the construction management team to build the dorms. Also, P3, private-public partnership with a private developer to come in, where there is less control the university would have in that regard. There'd be a land lease that would be involved with that. And then the traditional bond issuance, which is their last recommendation. But you'll hear more about that in detail. The final report was submitted to us on Monday, and I believe at the next board meeting, Mr. Chairman, there'll be a development session on that proposal and analysis. That completes my report.
Before we go to the next item, I want to suspend this board meeting for five minutes and ask Tracy, Dr. Tracy Gerald, to bring in our special guest. Because I just want to acknowledge somebody who really, really helps Reggie and I admire and the rest of us. So Tracy, bring in our special guest. For our former chair. Your wife went through a lot to make this happen for you, Mr. Ruttledge. So Maple, are we gonna sing happy birthday to him? You ready?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Ron. Happy birthday to you.
Dr. Rutledge, you want to tell us what all you went through to make this happen?
I'm starting to cost as much as the cake these days.
Cake looks like it's pretty good over there, Rutledge. Yes?
I just wanted to thank you all for having me. Just want to thank you, Coach, for your honesty, for not as well as being your comp. We can add no bear. Foundation, along with Deliations Arms, Run Ahead, the Arms of Billions. Or Disadvantage, State of the Union. Who we do the help there, free screenings. Very busy weekend, but you guys know, we're screening out there. We come out dealing with disparity in healthcare, you know, after marriage, the dying, minimal. So glad you guys helped sponsor that and incorporate. Deliations has an arm that deals consistently with disparity in healthcare. They're covering basic challenges, maybe losing some medications. They do, I appreciate you guys for working with Deliations.
Mr. Lawson? Well, first, Mr. President, then you, Mr. Lawson, Shorty. Mr. President? Just real quickly, I wanted to put a save the date out there for you. The Southern University Day in the legislature is scheduled for April 22nd. Anyone that can show up, be great. We're gonna try to have a large group of students who've done research. They'll be presenting that there. And I will tell you, one of the joys that there is to this work is to go and engage these students as they talk about the research that they've done and the poster that's there. And it's very impressive to the legislature, too. So that's April 22nd. Shorty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Harrell? Mr. Cawthorn and I wanted to know if you have Mr. Clayton's cellphone number to meet your goals? Because if you don't, we will definitely give you his cellphone number on behalf of the Barstool.
We keep trying.
So that you can meet all of your financial needs for the foreseeable future.
It's like Putin and Zelensky. Come on, we gotta, we gotta get on. All right, folks, next item. Board of Supervisors and Agriculture Mechanical College and its committees may meet in executive session to discuss qualifications of individual under the provisions of L.A. R.S. Provide Stat 4217. Et cetera. Discussion on investigative proceedings regarding allegations of misconduct or such matters. While in executive session, the board may meet with its staff attorneys and other persons if need necessary. No motions or vote, maybe take them out in executive session. Is there a motion to convene an executive session? Moved by Reverend Tarby, seconded by Donald Ray Henry. We are now...
I gotta do a roll call.
We will now ask the president to do a roll call.
Bear with me here, let me find it. You do that, too. Thank you.
Okay. Attorney Tony Clayton.
Oh, yeah, here, yes.
Mr. Reggie Abraham. Ms. Dana Bailey.
Present.
You gotta say yes or no.
Yes.
Attorney Quincy Cawthorn. Mrs. L. Dudley.
Yes.
Ms. Maple Gaines. Mr. Donald Ray Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Myron K. Lawson. Mr. Chris Massengale. Mr. Paul Matthews.
Yes.
Attorney Des Moines Rutledge. Attorney Edwin Shorty.
Yes.
Mrs. Ann A. Smith. Reverend Dr. Samuel Tolbert. Dr. Ronnie Whitfield. Mr. Henry Whitehorn. That's all. The yeses have it. We're now in executive session. So we're gonna take it to the room over there.
All right, folks. While in executive session, the board discussed investigated proceedings regarding allegations of misconduct. While in executive session, no motions were made or votes taken. Is there a motion to reconvene in open session? Motion by Mr. Matthews, second by Reverend Tarbit. All in favor going back into session, say aye. Any opposition, say nay.
Roll call.
Roll call for aye.
Attorney Tony Clayton.
Yes.
Mr. Reggie Abraham.
Present.
Miss, yes or no?
Yes.
Miss Dana Bailey.
Yes.
Attorney Quincy Cawthorn.
Yes.
Miss Dazel Dudley.
Yes.
Mrs. Maple Gaines.
Yes.
Mr. Donald Ray Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Myron K. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Chris Massingale.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Matthews.
Yes.
Attorney Des Moines Rutledge.
Attorney Edwin Shorty.
Yes.
Mrs. Ann A. Smith.
Yes.
The Reverend Dr. Samuel Tobler.
Yes.
Dr. Ronnie Whitfield.
Mr. Henry Whitehorn.
Okay, the justice has it unanimous.
We are back in, um, open session. Any other business? As your chairman, I want to make a statement. Throughout this past several weeks, I thought the administration did a superb job in making sure that openness, transparency, and candidness was done. And I applaud the president and the staff for what they've done. So having saying that we will continue this process of transparency under his leadership, we're making sure that the public knows exactly what happened, and that's what we're doing. With that, I'm seeing no other business. I'm looking at Ms. Ann Smith. She's moved to join, and second by Zell, Sheriff Whitehorn, Maple, Donald Ray, Shorty. We are now joined, thanks.